Eric, I apologize for being a couple of minutes late. Did you guys already start or were you waiting for me?
They're giving you a couple of minutes.
Okay, I was just having a hard time to put my finger on the link. All right, well, it's our custom to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, if you wouldn't mind, join with me after the pledge. We observe a brief moment of silence for our active servicemen and women. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, Eric. So we're going to begin tonight with the continued public hearing for property forty fifteen County Road sixteen. Property is owned by James Colleen Swetman. They are seeking an area variance for front sapback of forty-two point one seven feet when sixty feet is required and an area variance for lot coverage of twenty-five percent when twenty-two point five percent is the maximum allowed. Who will be speaking for the applicant?
This is Wendy Mahar with Mahar Engineering. I'm here representing the client. I'd like to go over the the front setback variance first. As you know, we we came last time requesting the same front setback variance. The property is split by Westlake Road. There's a lower lot and an upper lot. We have chosen to create access from Anna Linda Drive. The front setback, the address for the property is Westlake Road, but because we're gaining access from Anna Linda Drive, we've we've proposed the front set setback from Anna Linda. The upper portion of the lot is has a gradual, more gradual or flatter slope up near Anna Linda Drive and then it kind of starts sloping a little steeper as you head towards the lake and pass the sixty-foot setback. So we've strategically located the house to minimize the lot coverage with a driveway access and minimize retaining walls and position the house to where it matches up with the contours for a lower level walkout towards the back. We've allowed for for just a couple of parking spaces in the front of the home and and most of the house actually is behind the sixty-foot setback, just a little bit of the one of the garage bump out and and another small portion of the home. We didn't want to have the house too far down the hill because again it would lengthen the driveway and lot coverage, but it also cause a lot more disturbance within those steep slopes. I have four parcels on Anna Linda Drive within the same neighborhood there. Forty seventy-five, again, we did these on Encore, but just a rough, rough estimation. Forty seventy-five on Linda Drive is about thirty feet from the right of way. Forty eighty-seven on Linda Drive is about forty-nine feet from the right of way. Forty ninety-five on Linda Drive, they have a detached garage. It's about thirty-four feet from the right of way and about fifty feet for the house. And forty-one thirteen on Linda Drive is about thirty feet from the right of way. So it's it's well within the character of the neighborhood. And again, the main reason for the house being closer to Anna Linda Drive is to really minimize that that lot coverage and and disturbance on the steep slope. Like to entertain any questions that you folks may have for the front setback request.
What questions do we have for members of the board?
Terrence, am I wrong on this? The initial issue was there were two properties here. There were two houses that could be developed here. Or am I wrong on that?
Well, it's not that there were two properties, but the initial application was seeking a and a use variance for the building on the lakeside on the east side of Westlake Road.
And that's gone now, right, at this point?
Yep.
Terrence, the that request is gone because the building on the lake is going to be used as what or considered what?
Those details, I think it might be helpful of Eric Phyllis. And I just know that it was removed because apparently it's not going to be a livable structure anymore.
Essentially, we just we got more information that it wasn't to be considered a dwelling. It is considered an accessory building. It has, you know, some habitable space in it, but not to the extent that it would be characterized as a dwelling. So there is certainly some non-conforming aspects to it, but it wouldn't be considered a dwelling.
Now I'm more confused, Eric. It is going to have habitable space?
It already does have habitable space. And so there's a difference between whether something has habitable space and whether it's considered a dwelling. So if it's like insulated, you know, it could be considered habitable space. If it has, you know, this has a kitchen down there. There's there's elements of habitable space without having habitable space. Accessory buildings in the town can't have habitable space. But whether or not it's considered a dwelling is whether it has living, sleeping, eating sanitation facilities or and sanitation facility. So it has to have all of those elements to be considered a dwelling under town code. This building does not have all of those elements after we've gotten some more information from the applicant.
Okay.
Did we get any information, you know, existing places in the neighboring area with similar variances that have been granted in the past or?
You're talking about the front setback?
Yeah, well, I guess the whole project in general, but yeah. Yeah, the four I listed have all variances right on the same street. I can read those again if you'd like.
Yeah, if that'd be great.
Please do. Wait, just make clear what?
Okay.
Variances were granted for them or that's like what they exist as approximately?
Well, I guess they exist at approximately, yes. I don't know when they were built and and was not able to to find the documented variances that were granted, but using Encore or and and approximate distances, they're pretty close on what's what's existing.
Okay.
Basically as built conditions. So forty-one thirteen Anna Linda Drive has about a thirty-foot setback. Forty ninety-five Anna Linda Drive has about a thirty-four foot setback from the detached garage to the right of way and a fifty-foot setback from the house to the right of way. Forty eighty-seven Anna Linda Drive has about a fifty-foot setback from Anna Linda and forty seventy-five Anna Linda Drive has approximately thirty-foot setback from Anna Linda Drive where we're asking forty-two point one seven.
And hello, everyone. Can you hear me just fine?
Yes.
As a follow-up, the numbers that Wendy just presented were determined through Encore, like she said, to the center line of Anna Linda Drive, essentially the westernmost property line of those properties along Anna Linda. In reality, the front setback we show on our plans is taken to the essentially fifteen feet off of that center line such that the fifty-foot front setback examples that were provided are in reality somewhere on the order of say thirty-five, like how we have shown for the forty-two. And for the thirty-foot examples with that fifteen-foot discrepancy, they're more in line with fifteen feet for the forty-two that we showed to that fifteen-foot offset from the center line of Anna Linda.
Yeah, so you can compare apples with apples. Thank you, Tony.
So Wendy, I'd like to hear a little bit of explanation for the lot coverage issue. In my mind, I've driven down Linda a lot of times and, you know, I can see how the setback numbers may meet with, you know, the character of the neighborhood. But since the town board has redone the lot coverage numbers allowable in the RLD, we've been pretty strict in adhering to those, particularly with this parcel where it has steep slopes that are more sensitive and give us even at least me greater pause in exceeding the lot coverage. I'd like to hear what is the applicant's need to go beyond the allowable lot coverage?
So as you folks know, it has a lower portion or lower lot on the waterfront and it has an upper portion that's just heavily wooded right now. We originally came in with twenty-nine percent lot coverage. We were proposing the same house footprint, but we were proposing a lot more grading and a larger paved path that went from the house meandering down to the lakeside. We have since taken the advice of the the Environmental Conservation Board in that we're going to leave a lot of the wooded area in front of the house and or uphill of Westlake Road and minimized our lot coverage greatly. We went from twenty-nine percent down to twenty-five percent. If you look at that existing lower portion of the lot down near the lake, it has an existing lot coverage of thirty and a half percent. So the upper portion of the lot, we're already a deficit trying to maintain a twenty-two and a half percent lot coverage. The overall lot coverage being twenty-five percent. If you just look at the upper lot as far as building lot coverage, excuse me, let me go back again, I apologize. The upper lot coverage is just twenty-three point seven percent with the building and on the wooded lot portion. And again, the lower lot portion is thirty point five. So we're we're not far off from what is required. For that zoning, we're required twenty-five percent normally, but because we do have the steep slope where we we have to adhere to the twenty twenty-two point five. As you can see, the house, that's another reason why we pushed the house closer to Anna Linda Drive is because we wanted to minimize our disturbance within a steep slope area. So again, we are a little bit over. However, the pre-existing non-conforming condition waterfront does work against us. And if you just look at the upper portion, we're twenty-three point seven percent lot coverage, which is not far off from what the requirement is within a steep or moderately steep slope requirement.
Okay, so my question though is, what is the need of the applicant for that larger lot coverage? I mean, this is a relatively, you know, standard-sized lot with all these sensitive, sensitive, steep slope areas and we're looking at a a building that's, you know, a little over fifty-seven hundred square feet. And so I'm trying to understand the need for that size of a structure on this lot.
Actually, if you look at my building lot coverage, we're at fourteen point four percent on our lot. So we are well within the tolerances for building lot coverage per the code. So we have not, it is not an extensively large building for the lot itself. Again, we have to take into account the two smaller structures that are not forming down at the shoreline. But we've done our due diligence to try to push the house as close to Anna Linda as we can, trying to adhere to the sixty-foot setback as best we can, but to kind of allow at least a car or two in front of the garage to be able to get off of Anna Linda Drive for parking for guests and neighbor or, you know, family members. So we need to allow some parking off of Anna Linda Drive. So we tried to find a balance of pushing the house closer to Anna Linda Drive to minimize lot coverage, but yet keep it far enough away to allow for parking. But again, the the structure is not too large for that building lot. We're within tolerances, we're less than the requirement required for building coverage. Again, the lot on the, I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, no, my question is about the lot coverage. I understand that you can only look at the building coverage and cut out all the other things that are on this parcel. But that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at the lot coverage, which has to include driveways, all the stuff on the lakefront. When you have all that other stuff already and you're putting a fifty-seven hundred square foot house on a parcel of sensitive, steep slopes, that's, you know, what I'm looking at. And I'm trying to understand, I'm giving you an opportunity to explain to us what is the need of the applicant that is driving that variance request?
So really, if you if you take out the building coverage, which we're well within the tolerances, the the small path that comes along the north side of the house and and meanders around to the lower level, we've used Sierra Scape, which is a wire mesh retaining system and it has no footprint as far as lot coverage. The only lot coverage that we show that we could take away would be the driveway. And again, the driveway allows for some car parking off Anna Linda Drive because it is very narrow. There are other alternatives besides asphalt, but to maintain these and the look of these really isn't what the owner wants to use. When you're, maybe you can pipe in Jim to give me your input on an alternative to reduce the driveway and or use a permeable surface. But I personally.
Sure, I can I can I can hop in here real quick. Hi, this is Jim Swetman here. One of the things, you know, the first time dealing with a brand-new home build and looking forward to obviously being in and living at a permanent residence in the in the town of Canadaigua. It just, it was surprising to me, it'll be be frank, at the amount of restrictions that that we had to conform to, which we're trying to to do here as best as possible. As you know, Terry, our first submission was a seven percent over the allowable lot coverage and a lot of that had to do with that that pathway that we had down in, the pathway that we had down to the lake. And again, let me just finish here, was was really, the idea was to set up like a like a park-like setting. Everybody's been to Sonnenberg Gardens before and my wife and I were there last year. And part of what we did is, you know, the old-fashioned garden is what we wanted to try and do. But that's all gone now. We've gotten some feedback from the town, some other boards, that we've eliminated that path going down to the lake. It's just going to be grass there. And so we've we've tried the best that we can and, you know, the you know, we feel that the that the variance request, I guess, is, if I can say, is well within, you know, the neighborhood character and try to do everything we can to get it down to only the two point five percent.
So Jim, I'll ask the same question I asked before. What is the need that's driving this? What are you trying to accomplish with the house that size that you need the variance?
Well, that that's obviously a good question. What it is, is the house, the total square footage, the the living space is obviously much less than that. It's a garage space. We have to have indoor parking in this kind of environment for for the garage. Also, this will be our permanent residence that my wife and I will have. Obviously, we'll have family here gathering. This will be the main gathering place also for my parents who are in their eighties. They'll be stopping by and visiting quite a bit. So really, the only hard stuff that we have here is the driveway and the brick walkway going into the front and a small pad area on the south side where we're having our air conditioners put. So if you look at what's being done as far as hardscape goes, that is really the only hardscape that we have. And again, we can't park on Anna Linda. So if there's any guests or family, they'll be parking into the driveway area. So it's it it's been scaled back. And I guess there is some things that we could do. We could make the driveway a, and I forget what that term is, Wendy knows, a permeable or something where the water goes through.
A perme.
Yep, yep, and that would be, that would be something that I would be open to for sure. You know, if there had to be a stipulation in the requirement that I would do that, I would be open to do that, make that driveway permeable.
So Eric, if that were to occur.
Right now, folks, we. Okay.
Eric, if that were to occur, remind us, my recollection is that it doesn't change the lot coverage calculation, but it certainly contributes towards lessening potential environmental impact, correct?
Yep, that's right.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Wendy, I cut you off.
That's okay. Currently, we really only have about three parking spots in front of the garages, room for three, three cars sitting there in front of the garage. So we minimize the the pavement as best we could, but three parking spots is not a lot for, you know, the property.
And Terrence, I did talk, have a chance to talk to the neighbors across the street to Tom and Mary at number forty-one oh four about what we were doing here. Also, neighbors to the north, Alan Jean, forty ninety-five, and then Kate May down at four zero zero nine had a chance to physically in front talk to them about the project. And they didn't have any issues with the two and a half percent overage.
I wanted to add to the, there's two other houses, very similar. They have an upper lot, forty-one oh nine Anna Linda Drive, again, using Encore and approximations, about thirty-one percent lot coverage. And we've got forty eighty-seven Anna Linda Drive, which is a has about twenty-seven percent lot coverage, not including the development by the lake. So it's it's within the character of the neighborhood for sure. And again, like Jim said, the only hardscape that we could deduct would be just the path in front of the house and and the asphalt for the three parking spots in front of the garage.
What other questions do we have from the board on this application?
Just just to clarify, the from the original plan that you had, a lot of the wooded area on the slope is going to be left then?
Yeah, it's going to be, we're going to selectively, we we're going to take this into, you know, stages as far as the construction goes on this. So the idea is that, you know, the trees, you know, keep up the hill. So obviously, there's there's concern about, you know, taking out trees and then causing things to happen. So it's my understanding that the trees are part of the slope.
I guess one other question here.
Go ahead, sorry, sir.
Original plan, I think, talked about removing the trees on the lakeside of the road?
Yeah, those those, yeah, there there was some miscommunication that was given on that. There is, there is no plan to remove those beautiful trees. They show a couple of them there on that on that lake slope. There is just, this is why we bought it, so.
Yeah, those are nice, you know.
Yeah, they're they're fifty-year-old, they're huge, I mean.
Thank you.
So following up on what Chip said, I read the environmental recommendations. And how how are you reacting then to those recommendations? I think you touched on it earlier.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, Bob, just, we have substantially pulled back. If you saw the original drawing, that walkway going down was 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 pretty abrasive. Let's put it that way. It was a, my, I don't know what word to use, but it was something that we wanted, we wanted to carry on. That lower property is so unique. My wife and I, we wanted to carry on the aesthetics and the architecture of that lower property and carry it right up to that house and really make it, quite frankly, beautiful. And we've had a substantially cut back that to get down to where we are now. And I don't know, getting a little emotional here, but there's a lot of things that have been given up so that we get to this point right now.
Yeah, we had a patio area, a level spot for them to have a patio area and a lot larger path going down. We've we've taken all of.
That's all gone.
Yep.
What other questions from the board? All right. We'll open this and see if there's any comment or question from anybody in the audience. This is a public hearing, so you have an opportunity to obviously give any comment you would like to the board, any additional information. We just ask that you identify yourself and your address and then deliver your comments to the board. I'm not hearing anyone, but if you would like to comment and you may be on mute, just remember to unmute yourself and and speak up. And we'd like to hear a comment from anyone that wants to give one. All right, not seeing any. We'll go back to the board. Any final comments or questions from the board?
To me, if you look at the five criteria that we're looking at, I mean, self-created and is it substantial? I don't think it's that substantial in view of the rest of the neighborhood. And I, I mean, the first one, is it, you know, self-created? I don't know, but I think they've worked at this thing to try to minimize it. And that becomes a question to me is, within the five, is it is it there? And it's pretty close.
Again, that that lot on the lakeside works against us, that pre-existing lot coverage. But it's it's very charming and and is admired by a lot of passerby's and the candidate. We're leady, I know. So it's, we we hate to remove any of that charm from the lakeside. That's why the owner purchased the property.
So Eric, one thing that would be helpful, I'm trying to understand the comments that were given by the Ontario County Planning Board. This was reviewed when it included the area, the area. This was reviewed when it included the area, the area variance and use variance applications and recommendation was denial, correct?
That's correct.
But they didn't look at it when the application was um amended to remove the use variance, correct?
They did not. Although my understanding is that if there's multiple variances in lot coverage, and if there's multiple variances, or even if there's just lot coverage variances, they automatically deny it.
Okay. All right, well, uh we've had a good discussion. If there's not any additional questions from the board, I'll ask the applicant if there would like to close their application. What that means is we would close the public hearing. We um don't receive any additional information. We have sixty two days to render decision on the application, although it's our custom to deliberate and vote on applications on the evening that we hear them. And once we close and go into our deliberations, those are public, uh but they're not open for public comment. So you can listen, but there's no additional opportunity to submit information once we go into deliberations. So um how's the applicant feeling? Would you like to close the application?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, with that, the application's closed. We don't have any other public hearings tonight, so we will go ahead and begin our deliberations on this application. So anyone want to share their thoughts? Kick us off?
Well, I guess um I would start by uh saying that in terms of the neighborhood itself, and Dave made the point that um visually, what you'd be uh looking at wouldn't be hugely different than the other many of the other properties. Uh but the other, the one question in my mind is sometimes we have neighborhood character versus a revised zoning regs. In other words, some of the people with the pre-existing non-conformities got a break because they made moves before the uh the the zoning regs changed. And uh I don't know when some of that happened. I understand the visual with the neighborhood uh character, and that's a plus. The minus is I'm not quite sure uh you know, when some of these uh people may have gotten uh variances for their their properties. Uh would would that be uh something, Eric, that we could uh uh easily find out, or is that uh too vague?
We we could probably find out. I mean, I would have to ask the town clerk to search their record for variances granted. Um I would think that there's probably not been I I can recall that there's not any for, you know, an instance like this, where it involves steep slopes, disturbance, and the reduced lot coverage amount. That was only just created um two years ago, probably now. And lot coverage being only since two thousand fifteen is another relatively new one where there haven't been, you know, you've had plenty of requests, you've granted some of them, but not not a huge history for it. Um so I guess if your question is for the permit information forum, that would be more difficult to dig up. To dig up the variances granted for him, that would be more simple anyways, be requesting.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking more about the variances, the easy wage. Uh if there are recent variances, uh that would uh you know, uh help this uh application, I think, uh if if there were with with uh a similar uh circumstance.
I think most of those homes up there are probably thirty five or forty years old.
That's what I was gonna say, Chip.
They were here when we moved here. Most, maybe one or two weren't, but they're they're old, you know.
And the outcome of their own pre-existing issues.
Yep. Yeah, this is a situation where you have a relatively established neighborhood and there's been a zoning change. Um and now we get a new build, right? And the question is, do you apply what the town board has enacted as what they want to see happen for new structures going forward in the RLD? Obviously, pre-existing buildings are pre-existing. You can't zone them out, but they've enacted a new standard for lot coverages. You know, that are pretty tight in the RLD for the reason that those are the parcels that directly above the lake. And so, you know, I kind of said earlier, I've taken ever since they enacted us a pretty stringent view on the lot coverages in the RLD, particularly where we have a, you know, brand new new construction where the parcels purchased and everything, you know, with knowledge of what the zoning requirements are. But any other thoughts?
I guess, uh, you know, they really have cut back quite a bit on the disturbance to that hillside. That, to me, is very important. And I guess it's more important than maybe quibbling about a few percentage points of lot coverage in my mind.
Yeah. I I agree with Chip on that one. I mean, they're kind of stuck with what's happened at the lakeside part of it. But they've done everything they can to try to preserve the trees and, you know, the buffer to the lake. I, as far as the setback issue is, it's, well, they can go two houses down and find a pro- you know, they they've got all kinds of 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 neighbors that are in that in that ballpark. So like I said, I if you look at the five, you know, criteria that we're looking at, he's really close. And I and I, I mean, you get, you can get hung up on the setback issue, or I mean, sorry, the self-created thing about the size of the house, but you have to ask him to, it's not for me to decide how big of a house somebody wants to have. So that's my feeling on it.
Well, kind of, it's when they're asking you for a variance.
Yeah, right?
Well, that's true. But at the same time, we're we're within two and a half percent here of oh, it's not like we're, i- is it substantial? I don't think so. Oh.
Well, it's a ten percent increase over what's allowed, right?
Well, look at the na- look at where he is in in the neighborhood. That that's all I'm looking at. In in comparison to what he's comparing himself to, it it's not out of line. But and it's a big lot and.
We don't, we don't get a lot of the on Alinda stuff. And I mean, just like you guys were saying that this is an older neighborhood. I mean, if it was Fallbrook or, you know, Sandy Beach or something like that, I mean, look at, look at all those. We just don't get a lot of.
The north, it's.
Yep. So one of the things that I thought um would be interesting to consider, I gotta pull back up the plan here. So lot coverage, they're asking for twenty five percent. But uh the driveway is a significant piece. It's seventeen hundred square feet, three point nine percent. Anyone open to the discussion about perme- permeable pavers?
I am. I actually was gonna bring that up too, Terrence. Um, you know, I mean, if if he's willing to put that in, you know, that's you know, like maybe use a different surface. I I think that that shows good faith to, you know, from an environmental perspective. But, you know, I mean, whether it's enforceable, I mean, we don't really have any you know, any code, you know, I mean, obviously, that's not not part of code at this point. So I don't know. I don't know how, where do we stand, you know, with that.
Well, the applicant already opened up that book.
Right, I know. It would be nice.
You know, you could condition it on that, uh did it essentially remain permeable in perpetuity or?
So so if he, like, let's say he, you know, did change that. I mean, like, what does that obviously, lot coverage would would even really need a variance at this point? Or, well, yeah, he would, because it would be it's a new build. Okay.
I think we've had several people do that recently. Uh yeah.
Well, I think the good faith with the environment between not cutting the trees down uh that were were mentioned uh and that that those certainly are are positives.
And that may change in the code later on, too, you know.
So the permeable paver idea, you know, is the really the only way that I can get my head around voting for this. But it doesn't need five votes, it only needs four votes.
Right. No, he's he said he's willing to do it. So I mean, that would be yeah, that would be a bonus anyways.
And my uh um conflict was uh neighborhood character, which I think it falls within, versus the uh revised zoning regs and um uh which has priority. I mean, we we have to be careful that we don't uh uh in a sense, rewrite the regs by uh uh going overboard with uh with variances and uh but I do see that as a conflict. Uh you know, I uh the the visual, the neighborhood character, that's definitely a uh a positive. That's a plus.
So just so I understand that comment, when you're talking about the character of the neighborhood, which of the variances are you talking about? The setback or the lot coverage?
Um I'm thinking about uh setback first and to a lesser extent, perhaps uh 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 coverage. But uh I don't really have the the uh the data in front of me for the coverage of the other houses. But uh but I, the visual with the uh with the setback.
Yeah, my view on the character of the neighborhood piece is in terms of setback, I don't think there's any adverse impact on the character of the neighborhood because most of the houses are at similar distances. That's just the way that they were built.
Right.
But I think that lot coverage is a different issue. You know, there has been an intervening change in the code, and just because there may have been, you know, more intensive lot coverages for houses that were built prior to the code, you know, doesn't mean that new new construction is grandfathered in, because that's already the character of the neighborhood.
Right. Right, that's exactly what my conflict is.
Yeah.
I think though, with uh the runoff issue, if if the driveway could be a permeable thing, like you're gonna reduce your runoff there, but you've also got that large wooded area on the downhill side, which certainly can pick up a lot of the runoff.
Is there, so Terrence, re- refresh my memory in the past. I know that we, I mean, obviously, we're bringing the variances as we can't like, I know we could put stipulations on it, but I mean, you know, do we, are we, do we have authority to say if you use this particular material, then we'll approve it as a condition? Or what's what's the process there?
Yeah, we can impose reasonable conditions that are based in in findings of fact. And so when we're considering a lot coverage, we could make a finding, right, that the driveway would be an additional, I just closed the number off of the site plan, but it was three point something percent. So if the driveway were were uh permeable, it would substantially reduce the impact on the environment to a level that would be, you know, equivalent to what's allowed with the current lot coverage numbers. We could try to make some sort of finding like that.
Personally, I, you know, and I'll I'll give you my opinion. I personally feel that it's not I mean, I understand what what you're saying, Bob, and I understand where your concerns are, Terrence, but I mean, it's kind of a, it's definitely a unique char- uh neighborhood, right? It's it is tied up there. It is hard to park on on that road. I don't have any issue with with the plans as they are right now, if if we do use the imper- or the the different type of material for the for the driveway. So that's my opinion.
I feel the same way. I feel if, you know, that's just an enhancement to this. Uh I think it removes a lot of the issues as far as lot coverage. And frankly, it it addresses some of the environmental issues. So let's, that's my go on it. I I would be pleased if he could do this with a permeable pa- or the permeable surface.
Uh when we go to vote on this, most of the time, we impose conditions after the fact. Should we, do you want to consider this with permeable pavers? So like the condition being considered as part of the the resolution or as opposed to being done after the fact, so you know kind of what you're voting on?
Would that change how we'd have to publicize it, though? I mean, or the application?
I don't think so. I mean, it's the same as putting a condition on afterwards, but you know, just so you guys are clear, you know, you, if you're saying, I would vote for this with this condition, making that clear upfront as opposed to uh after a vote where you really don't necessarily know what the conditions would be.
I see what you're saying.
And if it's not in the site plan to use the pavers, are we voting on something that's different than than what we've been presented? Do we have a, are we stepping on our own toes by doing that?
No, because we discussed it in the public hearing.
Okay.
I mean, I've already said that's my condition, is that I would vote on it if it's subject and required to uh be built with permeable pavers, but you only need four votes.
Well, as I said before, that he's already agreed to this this
Right.
you know, the 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 prospect of this. So I'd say that's only an enhancement.
All right. Do we want to have Eric call it then?
I'm good with it.
Uh with the understanding that an approval would contain a condition that the project uh contained permeable pavers for the driveway?
For the entirety of the driveway or just for the?
No, all of it, all of it. That's what I want. It's switch materials. If we're gonna do it, let's do it.
Well, some of the driveway, you know, towards the road, a lot of times end up being sloped. And so it's not like the best for, you know, water sitting on it, absorbing through. But we'll leave that to the applicant's engineer in reason.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, Eric. What what's the negative impact with the permeable as you approach the road?
No, I'm saying, so um like the the road apron, a lot of times slopes from the road, uh down from the road. So drainage doesn't kind of go onto the road. Um and with sloped areas, a lot of times, or sometimes depending on what the slope is, they're not great for permeable areas, because the water doesn't necessarily sit on them to absorb through. It's such as kind of wasted resources to to do that. Um so my point being, you know, if that is the case, that there's a slope on the driveway and apron from on Alinda Road or on Alinda Drive, that makes no sense to have permeable pavers, that there's not really much that's going to.
That's a good point. Actually, also, I mean, I would assume, is it is it as durable to, I mean, if there's no reason for, there, I mean, honestly, there's not going to be any water standing on that per- you know, permeable surface. So, you know, I guess we'd want it to be something that would weather the conditions of this this area, you know.
Eric, can you move the map a little bit to the right so we can see the um how steep that really is there?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, Chip. It looks like the apron is pretty steady uh at seven fifty six to seven fifty five. And then as you approach the house, the slope increases as you go down towards the um trench drains in front of the garage. So if anything, that apron piece would be the flattest part where it would probably soak up the most. If I'm looking at it correctly.
Uh I don't know, don't let that concern you too much. If you want to put it on there, that's fine.
Well, you brought it up, Eric, so.
Read it.
You knew you would, right?
You can't condition this thing the most practical use of permeable paper, you know, uh to where talk about open Pandora's box, but I
Looks like it flattens out again and right in front of the garage.
Yep. All right, well, I think we All right, well, I think we, well, let's do it formally. I'll make a motion then that Eric call it a roll call vote for this application with a condition, a a pre-stated condition that the driveway be built with permeable pavers. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, any nays? All right.
My question, you, are there other surfaces other than permeable pavers? I think there are.
Yeah, I put.
Permeable surface, yeah, permeable material, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Nice catch, Chip.
So to this application, my hire engineer for James Colleen Swetman, four zero one five County Road sixteen. They're requesting two area variances. The applicant is requesting an area variance for a four forty-two point one seven foot front setback when sixty feet is the minimum and an area variance for lot coverage of twenty-five percent when two, excuse me, twenty-two point five is a maximum allowed. Shall the applicant be granted a seventeen point eight three foot front setback area variance and a two point five percent lot coverage area variance? Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes. All right, the board's decision is based on the descriptions and drawings provided on the dates that Eric will fill in. And the information provided during the public hearing held on December fifteen, twenty twenty. The board has determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community, therefore the variance is granted. The board has considered the character of the neighborhood and determined that the approval of these variances will not negatively impact the character of the neighborhood. Regarding setback, there are other homes in the neighborhood similarly situated. And with regard to lot coverage, the board has considered that the lot coverage is a minimal variance and that impact to the environment will be mitigated by a condition that the driveway be built of permeable surfaces. The board has also considered the elimination of additional pathways through the steep slope area between the proposed residence and West Lake Road. The board has considered the unique topography of the site and determined that the topographical features limit the potential sites for the proposed structure necessitating the area variance. Are there any other findings of fact that everyone would like, anyone would like to include before we go to conditions?
Yes, yes, Terry, I I think we could put on the board considered elimination of the pathway and maybe retention of some of the woodland anyway.
Yep, let's include that. Anything else? Okay. Then although I mentioned it already in the finds of fact, it's going to go as a separate stated condition that the variance is conditioned upon the driveway being built of of permeable materials. It's the first condition. Second condition is that the variance granted is specific to the most recent plan submitted to the zoning board of appeals with the exception of the change to the driveway materials and any change in the plan other than the driveway materials shall invalidate the variance. And the third condition, the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. For there to obtain building permits within one year shall invalidate the variance. All right, you got what you need, Eric?
I think so.
Okay. So we're all done with that. Now, in terms of board business, has everyone had opportunity to review the minutes of the November meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move.
Okay, Dave has a motion, a second?
Second.
Bob has a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, the minutes are approved. Eric, would you like to just preview for us our January schedule?
Uh, yes, you have one application on Bedford Drive. The applicant is proposing to add on to his dwelling. I need a side setback variance. You have another application that I actually need some guidance from you guys on. It relates to one that you had saw, I guess it was last month. One of the ones on Sandy Beach Drive. This was the Batiste one. Let me just pull it up real quickly. They submitted revised plans and revised application showing that there'd be no need for a lot coverage variance. My question is, the town code, probably state code too, says that the zoning board shall refuse to hear a substantially similar application. Pull it up real quick. Said board shall refuse to hold hearings on the same or substantially similar application. So my question is, and this came up at PRC on Monday and Doug asked that I get some guidance from you guys. Is this a substantially similar application or can you, can you give me guidance on what would be? If it is, then it, you know, he has, within the year, he has to come before you guys to request a rehearing and and go through that whole process that's spelled out below. If it is not substantially similar, then he could come before you guys as a new application.
Which which application is it? Is it, it's the one, the people that wanted the ramp or which one?
No, this is the one further south on Sandy Beach Drive.
Okay.
Eric, would you just put back up that code section real quick?
Yep.
I I just took some of the training and I thought from the state stuff I read and maybe my mind is, I took did so much of it all at once, but I thought we could, with an appeal to come back to us, I thought if if we had a majority vote, we could rehear something. Is it, is it because that our town has decided with this language that's substantially similar? Is that local language, Eric? Is that, or or am I off on this?
No, what's happening is you're right, you're right, there's the code. New York State Town Law says that you have to have unanimous vote to rehear an application.
Right, okay.
And so somebody can come back with a very minor change and say, oh, this is a brand new application. I don't need a unanimous vote. And so the town has put in this section of code which says that, you know, if it's the same or substantially similar, then you can't come back unless you get the unanimous vote for rehearing. You've got to wait the year.
Okay.
And so Eric's trying to get us to make a decision and tell him is this a plan that is substantially similar, similar, therefore requires a unanimous vote for rehearing, or is this a totally new plan that should be viewed as being completely outside of that requirement of town law?
I I would think if they've eliminated the lot coverage variance need, in my mind, that was the thing that I think most of us were most worried about. And that that would be, you'd be taking away one of two variances. That seems to me to be substantial.
So for me, Eric, I think it'd be helpful for me to understand what was the change, you know, the substantive change. I understand the the request for a lot coverage variance is no longer needed, but what changed in the in the proposal to get there?
Essentially, the gravel drive that is sits between the proposed addition and Sandy Beach Drive is to be removed or is proposed to be removed.
That's the only change is the driveway.
And it wasn't huge. It wasn't like a, it was only a little small spot, right, wasn't it?
So this is like six hundred and forty-five square feet?
Yeah, well, five hundred and eighty-two square feet is to be removed. So not, it doesn't show us all of it, I think because some of it is going to be like retained as walkway, you know? So it'd be a walkway kind of through that area, so not, not the entirety of it. Of the six hundred and fifty-four, five hundred and eighty-two are are removed.
So they got rid of the permanent gravel?
Yeah, exactly, Dave.
So are we supposed to first decide if it's substantial and then we need unanimous vote? Or is it, you know, what's our order of operations here?
So our decision is to decide if this is a substantially similar application. If it is, it requires a unanimous vote for us to rehear it.
Okay.
Decide that it's not substantially similar, then it can just be filed as a new application.
Got it.
Can I just jump in here, Terrence, if you don't mind, please? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I don't believe that the criteria is to say that it is substantially different. It only says that it modifies the safety and comfort of the neighborhood and the community and the safety of the community, et cetera.
That, I believe, refers to the section about rehearing. So if he comes before you for a request for a hearing, but again, that kind of comes after the determination about whether or not it's substantially similar.
I don't agree with that. I think we are voting and it needs to be voted on unanimously that the rehearing is based on change conditions that have occurred relating to the promotion of public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare. And a reconsideration is justified. It does not state that it has to be a substantial change. You can refuse it based on the fact that it is substantially similar.
Well, I think that there could be different interpretations. The way I read it clearly is that if the project is substantially similar, it can't be considered a new application. If we make a determination that it's not substantially similar to what was filed before and that it's a new application, we're done. They file a new application and we vote on it, hear it again and vote on it at a new public hearing.
Wouldn't it be safest just to go for a a vote on a rehearing? To cover all our bases?
Well, and that's what I was going to propose if people were inclined, because I think that would even save them the fee, right, Eric, of refiling a new application?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'm I'm up for that.
But that is where the condition comes in. If we're going to vote on that, it needs to be because we've made a determination that there are change conditions. And Eric's highlighting the language there that relate to public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, general welfare and a reconsideration is justified.
Well, the elimination of the lot coverage alone is a pretty big, it's a substantial change in the in the variance.
But it's substantially still the same same application with just that one change, so.
Well, that was the reason it was defeated, so.
Right.
Oh, go ahead, Chip.
No, just I'd be in favor of rehearing it again.
Okay. That clause there at the end gives you the really broad out. All you have to do is say that there has been change conditions regarding general welfare. That is a very broad, you know, you can pretty much fit anything into that. So I'd be inclined to say that I think that there are change conditions that would merit a rehearing if we want to vote that way. Do we have five votes for that?
I I'm I'm on board. For for, you know, just because we vote yes to rehear it, that that doesn't mean that you you are required or obligated to vote yes after the presentation.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, we're just, we're so, you know, it's just giving them a chance to rehear. It sound, it seems to me that they've shown good faith and you know.
Wasn't that something we brought up though when they came in? I'm just, you know, I'm trying to remember the whole conversation. I mean, I I don't have an issue with rehearing it. I mean, I'm I'm all about giving people the opportunity, but I don't know. I vaguely remember that we we, I think we actually asked them, you know, about removing something to reduce, you know, their variance request. But I could be wrong.
We did. Yeah.
I just don't want to open, open the door for people to say, oh, well, I'm going to come back in and, you know, but we've we've come across this in the past, so it's nothing new, I don't think.
Yeah, I voted for it for the first time, so it's not like I'm, I might be somewhat disingenuous to say it. I'd like to have a rehearing, but at the same time, I agree with John. I think it needs to be a rehearing instead of just automatically saying, well, we can vote for it, you know, you know, separate it. I I think to cover ourselves, to me, I think it needs a rehearing and a unanimous vote to approve that.
Like a super majority, are you saying, Dave, or?
Well, I think the law, well, the rule is unanimous.
Unanimous, okay.
Isn't it? Am I wrong on that? Terrence would know that.
Yeah.
Unanimous vote for rehearing.
So in essence, we've become a jury because we have to have consensus or or it doesn't happen. The rehearing doesn't.
You also and Terrence kind of touched on it too, but you have to find that that these changes have occurred. So it's it's not, it's not as simple as just necessarily voting unanimously, but you have to have to say for such and such reason.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that the revised plans demonstrate can change conditions that impact the general welfare of the community by making a proposed project that is within the lot coverage allowed for that zoning district and that we vote to rehear this application.
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, so we have a rehearing, Eric. For the Batiste property. All right, I think that's it, right? We don't have any referrals or any referrals, Eric?
Not this month. You will in January. And also I'm going to send to you guys the current draft of the comprehensive plan update for any comments that you may have.
Okay. And then just a reminder, and this is directed squarely at me. I don't want anyone to feel like it's Um, and then, just a reminder, and this is directed squarely at me, I don't want anyone to feel like it's, it's not, because I haven't done mine yet, but we need to get our training done. I generally do mine through the online component that's offered by the Department of State. Eric, do, do you have that URL that you could email around to people?
Yes.
Again? I think I've had it like three times and I can never find it.
I signed up today for four hours.
Good. Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, I make a motion then that we close at seven fourteen, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks everyone, have a great evening.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. See you guys.
Okay.